This meeting of New Iberia City Council to order the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Calvin Bagnow.
Lord, let us be thankful for the gathering that we have here tonight. Let's ever be mindful for the reason that we're here and as the service to the people of the city of New Iberia. Let us keep that in mind as we deliberate on all of our agenda items tonight. We ask this to our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Councilmember Natalie Roban.
Present.
Councilmember Peggy Girak.
Present.
Councilmember Robert Swear.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Van Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond Lewis.
Councilmember Calvin Bagnow.
Here.
Mayor Curry, you have four.
Thank you. I'd ask everyone to please put their phones on vibrate. And the next first agenda item is public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to address the council concerning an agenda item. There's no discussion. It's simply your your opportunity to express your concerns concerning an agenda item. And I do not believe that we have any.
No ma'am.
Forms that have been completed. So we'll move on to agenda item two, which is acceptance of the minutes of the New Iberia City Council meeting held on Tuesday, March 18th, 2014, as published on Thursday, March 27th, 2014. Motion by Mr. Bagnow, second by Mr. Merrill. Is there any discussion, any objection? No objection, motion carries. The next agenda item are persons to address the council. And I see that they just walked in. We have the Iberia Parish Schools Gifted and Talented Program, I think sixth graders. And we have Ms. Margaret Simon. And I'd ask her to come up maybe and introduce the other teachers. And I don't know if the students are gonna speak or... Do you mind introducing the other teachers just for everyone? Sure, please, please.
I'd like to introduce to you our gifted and talented teachers for the elementary level in Iberia Parish. We have with us today Beth DeMye, Sally Bonet, Jermaine Como. Is that all of you? Yeah, okay. And myself, Margaret Simon. We have other teachers who are not able to come with us tonight. The students, the sixth grade students have an exciting plan that they would like to present to you. And they will introduce themselves as they speak.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Good evening.
Hello and good evening. I'm Kaylee Medier. And the GT sixth graders of Iberia Parish would like to discuss the Joe Day Bridge opening ceremony we've planned. This event is planned by kids. And a walk will start at 9:00 a.m. and take off from the city hall, continuing on Main Street to the new bridge where a ribbon will be cut and the Boy Scouts of Troop 133 will raise the flags. We are glad that the bridge is already open and we and we've already planned the grand celebration of it. At the bridge, we will also announce the details and purpose of the opening to the public.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Miguez. We sixth graders hope to see you there. My teacher has some flyers that have all the information we just talked about. Feel free to make copies and pass them out to anyone who you think will be interested. Are there any questions?
Ms. Roban. One of our students is in Iberia and he's got the little part that explains everything.
Oh, okay.
If one of you two wanna go up and explain the part of the walk that we'll be raising money for? Thank you.
Well, you see, we're going to be selling T-shirts for about $15 each. And we've already raised a lot of sponsors. And I think we've already got like $1,000 already. And that's gonna make up for what we're buying the T-shirts. And we're gonna have people who will buy them for $15. And all the donations are gonna go to the Westin Park so that they can get um so that they can get playground equipment, just like the New Iberia Park just had, the new playground equipment.
Ms. Medier, I'm so, I mean, I'm fooled. I'm fooled. 'Cause to have kids like y'all, to be so thoughtful, so thoughtful, I say, and taking charge. Y'all really taking charge. I'm real pleased. I don't know what to say. I just don't know what to say because I'm gonna cry. But thank you so much for a project well needed. And it's gonna be very well appreciated and very well played on. 'Cause for the the farmer's market, the children were playing in the dust and on playground equipment, the dust was flying. The parents could not stop them. So I walked over and I told her, I said, "That's what we play on." And she said, "But they enjoy it." I said, "They do enjoy it," you know? So just thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all, and I appreciate it. Each and every one of y'all.
Okay.
Natalie, you're welcome.
Now, Ms. Roban?
Yeah, what day is it gonna be?
It's May 10th. And we put a flyer on each of your desks and, you know, ask you to help us maybe to promote it. We've been working on this for quite some time now. I did get to attend one of the classes that they had at Bell Place Middle School a while back. And there's beginning stages of the of planning for the walk. And they are so well organized. Their teachers are doing such a good job and the students are just unbelievable. They they're gonna do a tremendous job for the city. And I want you to know that DOTD spur of the moment did a little ribbon cutting, just very small. There was, were not that many people here. This is our really big city celebration. So we appreciate all the hard work that you have have been, you know, that all the hard work that you've been doing to get this planned. Is our next individual here? Okay, great. And then if y'all have questions after, we'll let him. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for letting us attend. And I just have to find it.
That's okay. Take your time. We're not in a hurry.
Okay. I am Ian Robashow and I am also in the sixth grade, Iberia Parish. Just a group. And we are planning to have a walk before the ceremony, which takes place at 9:00 a.m. starting at the city hall and ends at the bridge. And the walk is free, but if anyone would like to purchase a T-shirt, they could. For a youth would be $10, an adult would be $15, and a double XL would be $17. And all the profits that we receive will go toward the Westin Park gaining for their play equipment, playground equipment. And we have received multiple sponsorships, but we are still seeking out those.
You can say that again. You're on television. Say that one more time so maybe someone will hear you.
We have already gained many sponsors but are seeking more.
Great.
If anyone has any questions.
Questions, anyone?
I just would like to know your name, young man.
Ian Robashow.
Robashow, you was not here, I don't think. Were you here when I spoke?
No, just wondering.
I'm Peggy Girak and I represent the Westin Park and District 2. I was telling how proud I am of y'all for taking charge and leadership and doing a project that's well overdue and very well much needed. And the children gonna appreciate it too as much as the adult. I'm just, I can't speak for all of them right now. I could speak for Ms. Medier and Medier. I know about the Mediers. I know about the Robashows. So y'all parents and grandparents, great-grandparents should be very, very proud of y'all. Very proud to take the leadership. That's not even y'all concerned. So I know y'all some caring kids and y'all gonna go a long way in life with that. Remember it. Thank you, baby.
Thank you. Ms. Roban?
I'm gonna be out of town that day, but I'm definitely gonna buy a T-shirt and I wanna sponsor. And I just wanna say to the group. We said get it together. I'm gonna get it together right now. That Ms. Sally was one of my teachers. I was putting GT when I was very young. And I hope. She helped me through a lot and I hope that y'all stay in it. And it's gonna get harder, like seventh, eighth grade, it's gonna get harder, but stay in it. I stayed in it through graduating. And she was a great, great, great influence for me. And y'all need to do everything y'all can and learn everything you can from them because you cannot get any education better than a gifted education in this parish. And that's it.
Mr. Merrill?
Yeah, I wanna again thank y'all too as far as everything that Mr. Girak and Natalie said. It's good to see a young man up there 'cause I saw all these young ladies up there. So it's good to know that they have a young man involved. And I wanna tell y'all it's good to see y'all involved in y'all community 'cause a lot of young people are not. And hopefully that'll play into y'all future as far as being young people that's looking forward to what's going on in y'all community and represent. I wanna give a donation also for generous quality in my little store on Main Street. I'll get with somebody to give y'all donation. I'd like to buy a T-shirt as well.
Yes, sir.
And thank y'all for y'all contribution.
And there are more of us than that's here today. They just weren't able to attend.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
I wanna just applaud y'all, young people. Stay with the gifted and talented, but always remember, no matter how high you get, remember your birthplace where you was raised. And always take with y'all what most impressed me, y'all willingness to give back to the community where you live. And hopefully, just hopefully, one day, y'all finish college and finish school and finish college, y'all come back here and might even wanna serve us in a like to position to continue moving our city forward. Because we're none that sit up here are gonna be here until eternity. But I would be most pleased and comfortable if one of you guys in your groups, one day, even if I'm old and I can, God would allow me to see that time, that y'all would be represented in one of our city seats or parish seat or in some form of our government. But y'all need to be committed because you guys are our future. 'Cause again, we're not gonna be here forever. And I thank you. And I wanna buy my shirt tonight.
Well, I don't know if they have one of the order forms.
Well, I have one in my book sack.
They have an order form. You have an order form on your desk. That's what I'm asking, have they taken the order form?
I'm not exactly sure what we're gonna be giving out the order forms. We haven't been informed yet.
We have them already.
We have them.
Well, I wasn't.
They were emailed to us and so I made a copy for each of the council members so that they would have the information at their desk this evening.
Yeah.
And we're gonna try and spread it, spread the word also. And I certainly would like to donate some money also, so I'll be getting back with y'all. I know how to get in touch with Ms. Simon, so I'll get with you. Mr. Bagnow?
I would like to also echo what my colleagues have said and that it is admirable that you've taken on this challenge and worthy cause. And it's all about giving back to the community and you starting at a young age and a wonderful age and just continue that throughout your life, but I applaud you also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all once again. And I think we'll be getting together one more time, maybe with the department heads.
I'd also like to say that the students couldn't do this because they're not allowed to use Facebook because they're under 13. But I did build a Facebook page, so please look for that. It's called the Joe Day Bridge Grand Opening. If you will like it and then spread the word and we can get the word out that way too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Girak.
Thank you all for your efforts and what you're doing. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, and I'm gonna give y'all a donation.
Give one to that guy right on the fly. The district, the bridge is actually, the bridge is actually in my district, in District 1. And I would, it's, I have a commitment for my sister's wedding. Other than that, I was told to live there. But I will definitely spread the word to my district. They are like so pumped that this bridge is open. So I will definitely get them involved and all my friends I have that live in that area. And I will definitely spread the word and try to push my district out there.
And it is free, so we really need numbers going down the street. So anybody that wants to come for the walk, they don't have to wear a T-shirt, just come. So we have a lot, a lot of people, so we can drum up more support for it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
One other question.
Mr. Lewis?
Will y'all be, besides the T-shirt, selling any?
There's a bunch.
Snack, Gatorade, water? It just, yes, sir?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. I think it's only the T-shirts we've got planned.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you taking the time to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for letting us.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Very, very much, very well appreciated, very well spoken, very well done. I'm just so happy. I'm touched.
The next agenda item, items are proclamations. The first is Fair Housing Month. The 46th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 during the month of April is an occasion for all Americans individually and collectively to rededicate themselves to the principle of freedom from housing discrimination whenever it exists. Whereas this law guarantees for each citizen the critical personal element of freely choosing a home. And whereas a fair housing law has been passed by the state of Louisiana and implementation of the law requires the positive commitment, involvement, and support of each of our citizens. And whereas the department and agencies of the state of Louisiana are to provide leadership in the effort to make a fair housing not just an idea, but an ideal for all of our citizens. And whereas the barriers that diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen to freely choose a home will ultimately diminish the rights and limit the options of all. Now therefore, I Hilda Decurry, Mayor of the city of New Iberia, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Fair Housing Month. We have another proclamation. It's National Crime Victims Rights Week. And we have Cataline Terrio here. And I'll read the proclamation and then if you have some comments, we'll be glad for you to come up. Whereas Americans are victims of more than 22 million crimes each year. And these crimes also affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. Whereas crime can leave a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. In addition, these challenges, crime victims face criminal, military, and juvenile justice systems that at times ignore their rights and treat them with disrespect. Whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime Act to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation through fines and penalties paid by convicted federal offenders. Whereas the Crime Victims Fund today supports thousands of victims, victim assistance programs who provide help and support to trial victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide victims, victims of drunk driving crashes, and victims of domestic dating and sexual violence and other crimes. Whereas, whereas by ensuring that federal offender criminal fines and penalties are deposited into the criminal, into the Crime Victims Fund, Congress affirmed that those who commit crimes should be held accountable for the impact of their actions. Whereas the Crime Victims Fund provides victim assistance to more than 3.5 million crime victims annually and also provides compensation funds to thousands of crime victims each year for reimbursement of expenses related to their victimization. Whereas the victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including victims of newly recognized crimes such as domestic minor sex trafficking and cybercrime and victims who have not always trusted the criminal justice system, including immigrant victims, urban youth, and victims who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. Whereas now is the time to embrace a new emphasis on learning what works in reading undeserved victims and meeting victims' needs, reaching, excuse me, reaching undeserved victims and meeting victims' needs. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through the 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy, creativity, and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. Whereas Voice is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout New Iberia and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Right Week. Now therefore, I Hilda Decurry, Mayor of the city of New Iberia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through the 12th as the National Crime Victims Rights Week. And Cataline, I have this copy, but I know we'll have one to present to you that evening also. And if you have any comments, we'd love to.
I just wanna say thank you so much for doing it each year. And thank y'all really for letting us do it on the steps of City Hall. We have gotten so many good reviews with it being here at City Hall. And I'd like to invite each and every one of you to come. Even if you haven't been a victim of a crime, we don't wake up in the morning and say, "Well, I think I'm gonna be a victim today." We just never know. So please come out and support the ones that have been a victim of a crime. And thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time again to be here.
What time would that be, Cataline?
Sir?
What time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is April the 8th? That's 6th. Yes, on the steps, yes.
I had a question for you.
Yes.
We do neighborhood watching in our district, also Mr. Bagnow and also Ms. Roban. And I wanted to ask you if it's possible, maybe I can get your number. Maybe I can get you to come and speak to some of the people at the meeting. Because I was seeing about the Crime Victims Fund.
Right.
I don't know anything about it, but I think it's something that some of the people should know about. Lately, we've had some some serious break-ins in Mr. Bagnow's area where there was some home invasions.
I would love to do it. I've done it twice before, so yes.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Yes, I can give you my number now if you like or?
Sure. After the meeting, it's fine. If you're still gonna be here, I would appreciate it.
I'll give it. I'll have it.
Natalie has it. Natalie knows how to call down.
Yes, but please, anything that we can do to help victims of crime, we here for the, make better for the community.
All right. I wanna ask you one question.
Yes, ma'am.
'Cause I had another episode happen, the saying where I had a constituent of mine that got killed, I think in California. It might not be that frankly. And was that the crime victim that helped to bring that body back to you? I remember that she was murdered over there.
Well, there is a program through the Sheriff Department, because of reparations board, and they do help in various different ways.
Yeah, I just want people to be more aware of what's going on 'cause I know the lady, the family member, you know? You couldn't bring the body back and the sheriff took, and they took over the funeral and everything.
Right.
So that was a blessing.
That is, they have so many programs out there.
Through crime, though.
Right, right. They have so many programs that, you know, people just don't know about that. If they wanna contact me, I'll be glad to explain it to them.
You can get up a car.
I didn't bring up, Natalie knows how to reach me.
We have the information at City Hall too.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. The next agenda item is a recommendation to reappoint Ms. Willie Jefferson to the Municipal Civil Service Board. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Bagnow? Second by Mr. Doyle?
She wants to be there.
Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Was she the only applicant?
Yes, that's the only person we have. We advertised in the paper just recently again for board, so we'll see what happens, what we get.
They're not getting it.
She's done a really good job. And you know, you have to be fairly knowledgeable on this board. It takes some time to get your feet wet and to understand the civil service laws. So it's good when we have people that wanna continue, that do a good job like Ms. Jefferson has. Is there any objection? Well, let's vote out machines. Yes, please. Motion carries. All yeses and one abstained. Mr. Lewis. The next agenda item is a recommendation from the Pepper, for the Pepperflex Board. We have a vacant seat right now. We have two seats on the board. And I'd like to recommend Mr. Paul Landry for that board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bagnow and second by Mr. Doyle. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, let me ask one question. On the Pepperflex, is it out of the city limit? It's in the inner city.
Right next door.
'Cause I've never been back there.
Yeah, right next door to the wastewater point. It's in the city.
So anybody could be on the board. You have to reside in the city?
The board member is a city, someone who lives in. Our board member, the parish also appoints. And different, different organizations like the Saka, you know, different organizations appoint to the board also. Ms. Roban?
Just wanna make sure Mr. Landry wants to be on the board.
I think so.
Is he here?
He's here. He's here.
Been committed with that in the beginning.
With Mr. Land.
Okay, I'd ask you to please vote your machine.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Lewis, you had a comment? I'm sorry.
Just a comment. As long as I've been knowing Paul, he's always been about the children. He raised three himself and he's raising one now. And he's always been about the children, the benefit of our youth. And keep doing that, Paul. That's what it's all about. 'Cause again, I keep talking about, and I'm not going nowhere, but we're not gonna be here forever. And our youth gonna be our future. Not going nowhere. I don't have no sickness or nothing. Don't worry.
If there's no further comments, I ask you to please vote your machines.
A resolution granting authority to Mayor Hilda Decurry to sign and submit all necessary documents along with adopting certain policies, plans, and procedures in connection with the Community Development Block Grant Program for a sewer system rehab project. And this is for Adrian Street.
It's Adrian Street. It's for rehab of pump station in Forest Main. They need to place larger pumps and in order to be able to accommodate more water in that area. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Merrill, second by Mr. Bagnow. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say something. I'm always saying something, but then I mean. On the Community Development Block Grant money, I realize that Community Development Block Grant is for low-income people. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And we have not been fixing any houses or doing any project in the inner city 'cause the money had been going towards the sewers. Just, I want them to know this 'cause people still calling. So I'm asking them, when is the deadline for this to stop?
Well, we still have applied. I think you apply every two years. And I think we have, have we applied for two more, I think? I'm not positive.
But we don't have any way else we can get the first?
Well, right now, until we get finished with this consent, the consent decree and the work that needs to be completed, that's why we've continued to apply for wastewater. I mean, you all know the cost of rehab and the work that we've been doing.
I understand and I know, but I was.
But Mr. Girak, you're absolutely correct. As soon as we get out of this consent decree and we have the opportunity to apply for something else, I'm sure that we will.
Because I was at a Community Development Block Grant.
I know.
A meeting in Florida, I told it, I explained to you a little bit. And they said that all of the money should not be going towards that because it's for low-income area. And this money is going for everybody.
No, no.
So they say that maybe they could, for every area.
The money's used for in low-income areas.
Just in the low-income.
It's only used in the low-income areas. We follow the guidelines to.
Okay, good. No, but I know.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
No, no, I know that you follow the guidelines. No, no, I know that you follow the guideline, but I just want to make sure.
Right. Oh, no, it's only used, the, the community development block grant mon, grant money, when we have it allocated for wastewater, it's only used in the low-income areas.
And we want the people in the low-income area to know that this is the reason why the sewer and everything is operating as it is, in a good condition.
Correct.
Because of the community development block grant money. So what I wanted to say, don't call me about program, because the, the, uh, city do not fix houses or anything. We used to use community development block grants money. So don't think we lacking up on you, or we don't like you, or we don't want to do it. The money is allocated for the sewer system, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Rack.
And there's no matching funds on this?
No, no matching funds.
That's all right.
Mr. Lewis?
But we will be, uh, finished with all the consent decree work this scheduled year.
We hope by 2015.
I thought it was a year monitor.
Well, it's the completion date 2015, but they normally want you to complete it a year in advance.
It's supposed to be completed this year.
And Vince could not make it this evening. I can't, you know, I can't speak for, to that fact tonight. I'd prefer to have him address that issue.
Right, but I, my memory serves, he said we need to do it, have everything done for 14, and it would just be going and monitor.
He's doing the best he can to, to get it completed as quickly as possible.
15 is supposed to be completed.
Okay, if you would just vote your machines, please, on this agenda item. Motion carries unanimously. The next agenda item is Agenda Item 6B, and it's another resolution.
Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of New Iberia to act for, and on behalf of the City of New Iberia, to demolish the boardwalk along the banks of the Bayou Tesh between property owned by Dr. Joseph Sorsy fronting Bridge Street and property owned by Bert Sester Jr. fronting North Week Street, and to allow for the termination of any and all grants of servitude and/or easements in connection with said boardwalk.
Motion by Mr. Doyle, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any further discussion? We just kind of cleaning up our, our resolution from last time. Mr. Bagnow, I'm sorry.
I just, for the record, would just like to say that, you know, just to state my disappointment that we're having to do this. And I understand the homeowners, uh, the landowners, I should say, concerned that we might not have kept up our end of the bargain, but, you know, given the fact that the boardwalk was built with grant money from the state, uh, it wasn't to the original specs that we had hoped to, but it was built, unfortunately, we didn't keep up our end of the bargain, we didn't clean the bayou like we wanted to, uh, or like we needed to. But when we talk about the downtown area and the improvements we're making to the City Park Dock, the new dock for the canoe, the canoes who'll be doing the tour of the Tesh, I just think this was just a wonderful avenue to have a boardwalk there for the citizens to stand on there, watch the, the tour of the Tesh, the dragon boat races. If, if there had been a way to do it, I'm very disappointed that we didn't have the, the just, the, I guess, the dedication to, to see it through, to, to keep it going the way it should be. I'm just wanting to voice my opinion, let you know that. Thank you.
It's unfortunate, Mr. Bagnow, we don't have the equipment to get out there, clean, you know?
Right. Well, but, you know, again, with the volunteerism in this town, we've raised $250,000 for some playground equipment.
Yeah.
We're raising some money for Western Park, yet we couldn't get, couldn't get the people to get out there and help clean the bayou up.
Yeah.
So that we could utilize this place. That's disappointing to me.
It's unfortunate.
But, but Mr. Bagnow, isn't there a continuation of raising funds to help out in City Park wherever is needed?
In what way?
As they did with the playground equipment.
Oh, it's possible. I'm not sure with the group, yeah, there may be, I'm not sure.
They were on television past part two, this week missed the, uh, what is?
Well, but I'm not sure what their goal is yet.
They want to have someone to maintain and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, they are, they are looking at preventative maintenance.
But the boardwalk, you know, obviously, it wasn't built the way we had hoped it was built. I mean, we, uh, Mr. Hyke and I, you know, spent some time and money last year in helping to try to get it, uh, usable for the dragon boat races, which we did, uh, and they were very, uh, pleased that we did. Uh, the dragon boat people were excited that we were able to use it, and then after this year, we're tearing it down. So, I mean, they'll, they'll, they'll still be able to get there, uh, but, you know, it's just unfortunate that we can't see it go.
But they may hear you, Mr. Bagnow.
I, I hope you're right, Ms. Bagnow.
Because you have some caring.
I appreciate it.
People in the city as the rest in revitalization, they're working real hard to try to get funding for that and other things, too. I think somebody gonna hear you. Say your prayers.
If there's no further comments, I, Mr. Lewis?
You know, it, it's been a, since I've been in the office, um, and since it was built, I used to go back and, uh, I liked going behind, uh, Paul Landry's place, and I used to go back there and meditate. Um, I remember some years ago when I was on the council, Freddie, uh, got a group of volunteers and laborers to go back there and, and shore up the structure. But, uh, at this point, uh, last time I went, I think it was probably in January, um, it's, it's not safe. I try to figure how you get down and try to clean it up, and you know, erosion is a big factor, so you don't want to remove all vegetation, um, with the, with the boardwalk being there. But I think at this juncture, i- it's the property owner's right to request. They did it in good faith, and I do know we used funding to get it done, but at this point, it's a liability, uh, issue back there. Uh, I wasn't as comfortable as when I used to go gaze out on the waters of the Bayou Tesh because of the vegetation and the state it was in. So, um, that's, that's my comment.
Anyone else? I'd ask that you please vote your machines. Motion carries unanimously. The next agenda item is a resolution, Madam Clerk.
A resolution committing additional open funds for the Armaco Canal Drainage Improvements Project and requesting the Iberia Parish Council to also commit additional funds towards this project.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rack?
Second.
Second by Mr. Merrill. Is there any discussion?
Only thing I have.
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Merrill, then I'll get Mr. Lewis.
I just want to be able to, uh, you know, thank Mr. Bruce Hall, because I know some of this money he helped us to get that was going to be used for another project that he was looking at at the time.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, you know, I, I, I just want to thank him for his commitment on what he did do at the time, even though we didn't use the money for that, but it does come in handy for this project, and I just want to give him that, that credit for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Ma'am, my comment is simply, um, that, uh, when I got on the council, we had no money. City and Parish did some matching money to make this happen, and no way, I do, don't believe that, uh, we, we don't need this, uh, project. Um, I, I, I'm just at a, a difference, uh, on who needs to be approaching parish government with this. Just based upon the conversation that I've had with several members of the council, they thought you would present it to them, yourself, uh, not necessarily the council would be asking, uh, this, uh, and, uh, and surely I understand, uh, where kind of coming from on that, uh, but, uh, I like to see the project done, uh, but I, I think the approach, because when me and Ms. Roban were at the meeting, I think the cost was $960,000, and this could cost far way less. And the city does have a drainage, uh, fund for mosquito money of $2.3 million. Why don't we commit the money first and let the parish see we doing this in good faith and, and, and not stalling the project? They're not being led to believe they're stalling the project and go and get the project started. I think, I see no problem with the city saying, "Look, we got," and then approach parish government, and after you can go and tell them, "Look, we don't commit the money, but we'd like to recover whatever the portion is, because it could be less. It could be less than the nine, well, than the 5, I saw, $800,000."
Well, let me explain it, and I'll, Mr. Gl, George Glabrec is here.
Right.
In case y'all have questions, but we did find there was an additional $100,000, um, that we had not accounted for originally. Richard Mendel, who was our grant writer with Capital Outlay, came back and said that there's an additional $100,000. So the most it would be, we anticipate would be $800,000 above and beyond what we have. And, and you absolutely said it correctly. That doesn't mean that it's going to be that amount. We haven't bid it out yet. This is just an estimate. And, um, if, I don't know if any of you have questions, but Mr. Glabrec is, did take the time to come this evening, um, in case any of you do have questions.
Ma'am, I, I just have, just a finishing thought, uh, that, uh, I do want to see the project go forward, but I think, uh, the city in good faith. I think you need to present this to parish government, because we've seen on, uh, the Dasper Street Road, $185,000, where the parish government said yes to Ms. Roban, and then, uh, you say we weren't doing any roads. On the speed bumps, we see that, where, uh, the parish president allows that, uh, you didn't want the speed bumps, and I just think the ones I talked to have some concerns, not that they don't want to do it, but they don't want to spend money and say, "Well, we're gonna give y'all the money, but the road ain't gonna be done."
Oh.
And, and.
Um, this project, I can assure you, will be completed, and if anyone has any questions, Mr. Glabrec is here.
My, my only comment is I think you need to reassure, and for that reason, uh, I'm not gonna, uh, support that until you go and present it.
That's fine, Mr. Lewis.
I'd like to make a statement. The statement is that, uh, the Armaco Canal, we have been approaching it for over 40 years. And, uh, I don't want to see anything that's mis-presented or, I'm saying, I'm not saying it being done. I'm just, or, anything that's in the way of progress, because we progressing very well so far in the last two and a half years, that the city and the parish have taken over this project. And I certainly, certainly want to go to heaven, knowing that the Armaco Canal will be done, and nothing will be put in front of it to stop it or delay it. It should start on a time base, and I'm pretty sure the mayor would go to the parish and do whatever she need to do, not to delay this, because this is her baby as well as mine, as well as yours.
Right.
And, and we want the project to go, so if there's anything wrong, yes, we should correct it. In, in the way of presenting, is it gonna be an insult to the parish, or, or, or anyone, if the mayor need to go there, if I need to go there, whoever, or whatever. We need to take the right step and do it, so nothing will delay us, you know? Because I'm so glad to see these projects going on in the Western now. I don't want nobody to put a stick in the wheel, because this been a hard job, I know, to get these funds. I'm not sure it didn't come easy. And we don't want to delay them, because we have an extension to spend the money so far, and I don't want to prohibit that, you know? So if there's anything need to be corrected, let's do business, put our head together, correct it, and move forward, okay? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Rack. Mr. Doyle, and then Ms. Roban.
Mayor, could you maybe notify us when this could be on our agenda?
We, we plan on checking with them.
So we can be there?
Well, actually, I want to see, I think it has to go to committee first, isn't that correct, Mrs.?
That would be, yeah.
I believe, I believe they're gonna notify us. All we're asking you is to approve the resolution to send to the parish government requesting that they share in the cost of the overage, and they will notify us as to when they have their committee meeting.
Okay.
Domeng and Zabo and Mr. Glabrec has agreed to attend the meeting and explain the project if anyone from the parish has questions. So, um, you know, we're, we're open to, you know, keeping them informed as to exactly where we are with the project and, and why we're at the point we are, and why there's overage, and to explain everything to them.
Y'all certainly have been keeping me informed. We don't let me miss the ma, meeting, if y'all come get me.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Ms. Roban?
Okay, I just have a couple quick questions.
Sure.
Um, I'm new to the Armaco situation, I'm, you know, a year and a quarter of a year in so far, so I'm really on the back end of it. But in our meeting, you know, y'all kind of brought me up to date with what the situation was. We need more money, it's more than expected, et cetera. And I brought up the issue of maintenance, preventative maintenance, and all those things as far as after the project is completed. Since we've had that meeting, has anyone discussed this with parish government?
We.
Because that's, I don't see any of that included in, in here. Not that it has to be, but I'm just, I'm asking from my own knowledge.
No, we've, we came up with some figures. I think it was, George, correct me if I'm wrong, less than $50,000 a year.
Yeah, yeah, fifty, sixty, so.
Max is what we're saying.
Demand.
I don't know, George, if you want to, Mr. Glabrec, if you don't mind approaching the podium.
Well, I just, it's like, I don't really need numbers.
But we have not approached them for the maintenance.
But, yeah, my, my questions is not, my questions are not about numbers. It's just about, has this discussion taken place? Because, you know, I want to, you know, if it's something y'all been working on, and the, and the members that represent those districts feel that it's a necessity, then, you know, I'm all for putting my faith in them, but my only concern, like I've said, is preventative maintenance. It's who's, you know, this is gonna happen, and we're gonna take, the city's gonna take complete responsibility for it if something happens. We're completely liable, you know, our monetary situation isn't so solid right now, and we don't know where it's gonna be in five, 10, and 15 years, and if, if things happen, we're gonna take the brunt of, of all of this if we don't at least try to discuss it before going forward. That's just my concern.
Mr. Glabrec, did you have any comments concerning, we, we really did?
No, we, I'm George Glabrec with Domeng Zabo and Associates, the engineers on the project, and the O and M costs that we gave to Leroy, I think we provided a copy to you, Mayor, are a rough estimate, and, and the reason I say it's rough is the cost of this kind of pump station is how much it rains. Each, you know, I mean, the more it rains, the more fuel you burn, the more electricity. So it's hard to say what it would be, but it, that's about an average over like a 25 year. If it rains like it usually does in South Louisiana, if things break as often as they usually break, that's a rough estimate. Good years, you won't, at first, it won't be that much, because everything's new. Later on, it'll be more.
Right, and my only, you know, I understand that, you know, I do understand that they've given us a lot of capital outlay money for this project, which I think is very generous on their part, uh, you know, even though it's not affected my district, as a city member, I'm very appreciative of it, but my only concern is, you know, operating it is one thing. I understand that our Public Works Department is gonna operate and take care of it, but a suggestion that I made, and, and I would like to just at least be mentioned, you know, all they can do is say no. That's my motto. You know, you can, you can't go back 10 years now and say, "Well, you didn't ask that, so it's not my problem." But I suggested just if they would possibly consider, if the parish would possibly consider only reimbursing us for half of replacement parts down the lawn when things was, when things break, just replacement parts, not labor, not maintenance, just to split the cost of that, because these parts can be very expensive, and I don't think that's asking a lot, but I don't know where they're at either. and I don't think that's asking a lot, but I don't know where they're at either. I mean, we're also asking them for 400,000 dollars, so, you know, but I just, I feel that we should at least ask, because you can always say, well, we asked them, you know, when something happens down the road and we have to fork up this money, everybody's going to be like, well, the city pays for it, the parish didn't pay anything, and we can say, well, we had that discussion, and we were turned down, and we were at a situation where we had to move forward, but I think it should at least be addressed. That's just my personal opinion.
Ms. Roban, I'm so glad that you brought this up and your concern, I'm real pleased about that, but they discussed the 50,000 roughly yearly maintenance, but I would like to see it put into the, into the contract what we have, because we don't want the thing to be just put there and it going to run itself, self, you know, run itself. Somebody needs to maintain this when, when it gets, whatever, you need whatever it needs, and I'm so glad she said just about everything needed to be said, that maybe this should be put somewhere in the contract and shared with the parish on the maintenance, because we did take over to everybody. Armaco Canal is a parish project. The mayor wanted to take it on as a project to push it forward, and it's pushing, and Mr. Shadua and Mr. Doll and, you know, I wasn't here, but whatever they did, I really appreciate it needed to be done. But what we need to not forget, not just put it there and let itself run itself, because we need some maintenance, putting that type of money in that area, in any area, in that area to run by itself, that's not, that's not going to work. So, we need to talk with the parish, I agree with it, on some kind of high maintenance or.
I just think that we, we could maintain it, but maybe just as far as like replacement parts, something like that, because like I'm going through issue right now, I have a, you know, issue in my district, it's something we inherited, you know, so it's like, when you inherit something, you just, you know, and you need, you need to work on it, but you can't, because you don't have the money, or maybe just, like I said, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Merrill?
I'd like to know, from everything y'all put together, when is the projected time to start this project?
Depends on the funding. Right now, the issue and the reason that the mayor has brought this resolution up is that according to state law, when you advertise a project, if there's an, you have to have an engineer's estimate, and you have to have committed funds. We don't have enough funds, so we can't advertise the job until we have. It's not to say that it'll bid to what we estimate, we may be wrong, high, low, whatever, but the estimate that we put out, you have to have at least that much available. So, we hear, oh, 400,000, it may be, it may be nothing if it bids low enough, but you have to have a commitment for at least that amount. So, once we get the commitment of the funds, we can advertise the job. It usually takes two to three months to, to get bids in, execute contracts, and start construction, so I would not see this project starting before sometime late summer or early fall, if everything goes right.
And that's projecting on we getting the funds and everything.
Right.
Now, let me ask you a question. Let's say, for example, they have a problem with coming up with the funds, then that's going to, you know, delay the project a lot longer.
We can't advertise it until we have a commitment for the, the estimate.
So, that's my, that's my thing, too. If there was a problem involved where the parish say they didn't want to come up with the money, will we be prepared to be able to look at another avenue to be able to move forward with this project?
We'll have to go back and.
Go back to mosquito control.
Yes.
Okay, and, and that's, something Mr. Lewis said, it kind of had me thinking, and in a way of, I think we should still have another plan involved.
We do, we do.
Okay, that's, that's my thing. That's what I wanted to be able to, that's why I asked, asked the questions that I asked. Thank you very much.
We had a few meetings, Mayor, I don't want to cut anybody's. We have a few meetings in the back room where all this was discussed, where if we didn't have the, if the parish didn't commit the money, because the money have to be there, we would pull it out of mosquito control, because the funds are there, we would have to, but we trying to prevent from that, because we going to share a project, that's what it is, but we would not stop the project. So.
Okay, and anyone else? Mr. Bagnow hadn't spoken yet.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, I thought you had your hand up. Mr. Lewis?
And that's all for information purposes was my point. If we needed to do it, we have two points we are dedicated out of mosquito money. That's all my point was, and my other point was asking the mayor to present it to them, and, and, you know, it is, you know, kind of is what it is. We got the money to do the project, we're turning around.
And it's important project, and I think that the project should go forward, I would just hate to see it not go forward this year.
No, I agree. We want to get this completed. We've been working on this for a long time. Okay, um, do y'all, we need a mo, we have a motion in a second. Do y'all want to vote on the resolution? Motion carries, the only, one person abstained, Mr. Lewis. So, we will keep you informed as to our progress with the parish, when they have committing meetings and, okay.
Yeah, thank you so much to everyone who voted.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Glabrec. We appreciate all your efforts. The next agenda item is property standards revisits. The first is 720 West Street.
Where is that? In the west circle?
West Avenue?
West Avenue?
You're through, man, I want to call you.
There's the house.
That's all right.
Sorry. West Avenue.
All right. Huh? Better?
Yep. Oh, yeah, that's much better.
All right, I talked to, I talked to owner of this property last week when I was taking pictures, and there are some legal issues with family members. He wants to tear the house down, but he's got to get the legal issues with the rest of the family members straight, so I want to give him about 90 days to get that straight.
Yeah, because it's been on the, on the.
It's been there a while.
House several times, and that the cleanest, cleanest it ever looked.
Yeah, he, he, I made him get in there and clean the tree limbs and all the trash and everything, so that's my recommendation, is 90 days.
Mr. Rack, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I, I was just thinking about Jimmy. I came in, I had to serenade him with a song. He's doing such a wonderful job, and it is noticeable in the district. I'm not preparing house down, but in some cases, and the cleanup, the cleanup, the trash to the roof, you're going to need a special pickup. I don't know what we can do.
Okay, Mr. Rack made the motion, and it would be July 1st. The meeting on July 1st would be 90 days, and it's seconded by Mr. Doyle. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? No objections, motion carries, we'll revisit 720 West Avenue on July 1st. The next property, thank you, Mr. Rack, is 620 A Bear Street. That's another one of Mr. Rack's.
Yes.
Your recommendation?
The carport had fallen on this, they removed the carport, so I'm, I'm ready to remove it.
Okay. Where is that?
That's on Anderson.
Okay, you want a motion to remove it?
Remove it.
Okay. Mr. Rack, I'm sorry, is he being questioned?
Did I make a motion? Go back to the house. I want to make sure that.
It's not the same. No, no, that's Anderson.
No, I said, can you go back?
The one is right up in the front of your house, before your house where the carport had fallen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, did, oh, oh, okay.
They took the carport off.
Yeah, they did a fine job, and they cleaned up and everything, and someone is living in it.
Right.
It looked livable.
Right. I want to remove it, take it off.
Okay, so you have a motion to remove?
Yes, I do, and I want some of these people to know these houses that they're doing so well.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any objection? I'm sorry.
Some of these people that are doing such a good job with these houses, they got several places that donating some paint to help paint it up, and it would make it look much better, so come to me, and I'll try to do the best I can, see if I can just get the paint. Thank you.
Is this the A Bear one?
So, we have a motion in a second.
Why Anderson?
This is Anderson.
Which we vote on?
No, we did, I thought we were doing A Bear.
Oh, we're on A Bear, we're removing A Bear.
Removing A Bear, I did made a.
I, we were just still discussing A Bear.
Yeah.
I did a first.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any objection? Obviously, there shouldn't be to remove it from the list. Okay.
Yes.
Now, we are on Anderson, 1516 Anderson Street. Mr. Rack, it's also.
What's this, Jimmy?
I'm, I'm going to go 30 days. They bought a demolition permit, they started tearing the bad stuff out, there's a dumpster in the front yard, so they started working on it.
That's the house they had, and so turned up last week. I turned up on the wrong one, and they turned up the fire on the other one, too, but yes, 30 days.
30 days?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Merrill, to revisit in 30 days. Does anyone have any objection? It's 1516 Anderson.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to do all of it, I watch all of the years, and, and, and just let it come to that.
Yeah.
Just let it come to that, you know, as, as we just.
And it's hard.
I'm trying to work with it to get it to go back to the old house and take all the rotten wood out, so. But. So, they're going to keep the same? There was a house originally, and they added on to it. But they never finished it. They ran out of money, so now, I'm trying to get it to go back to the original house to fix that. Just get rid of the other stuff that's wrong. Yeah.
And, and you don't want anybody to upset, be upset.
It's going to be a money issue. That's going to cost them a lot of money. Well, it's going to be a money issue, because they don't.
Does anyone have any objection to revisit this property in 30 days? No objection, motion carries. The next is 326 Silver Street, and that's Mr. Merrill's.
Yes. There it is. All right, I'm going to go 30 days on this one. The people that come in, they cleaned the lot, and I think they started Saturday removing some of the roof. They had a metal roof on top, and they started removing some of that, but they did buy demo permits last week.
That's the shed in the backyard.
The shed's coming down, too. Shed is coming down. Everything's coming down. Everything coming down. 30 days is fine.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Merrill, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any objection to revisit in 30 days? No objection, motion carries. I have a few quick announcements there. We're having some problems in the parks. We're asking everyone, first of all, not to speed. The other thing is, is people are parking in areas that are not designated for vehicles. Please be observant and courteous as to where you should park. They're not to park on baseball fields. Someone was barbecuing on the baseball field in City Park at first base or something, had pits, they had cars, so please, you know, we're going to call the Sheriff's Department and have you removed. You know, you're messing up the parks with the tracks, plus it's dangerous, because children are playing, so please be, um.
Do we have time, Mayor, for skateboarding on the, on the walking path? There's no skateboarding allowed, because I had a complaint, I called the county, they did not allow it, if they are doing it for the people to go to the, set them doing, he will run them out the park, but the skateboarding on a walking track.
Okay.
We might have to put some signs up along.
No open for.
The other thing is, street construction, we're having issues with, problems with this also. Please, you know, parents, watch your children, they're riding bicycles after Mr. Leroy